She blessed us with both our citizens and our leaders. Father is unique tonight. Go out for our days, we'll continue to allow both our citizens and our leaders to work together to make it some beautiful place, safer place, a place that's easy access, a place just like I call home. Everybody will call home for it. So bless this meeting tonight, lead our conversation, it's impressive, I'm very grateful. Amen.
Thank you for that. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do we hear a motion to approve?
I'd motion to approve.
Got a first, I hear a second?
Second.
All right, got a first and a second in discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And any opposed? All right, um, so Emily, you said you wanted that prior to citizens comments? Or before the swearing in?
If we can do it right now.
Okay. Yeah, so we've got a special person here with us tonight that wants to give us some money for our Sesquicentennial stuff in Scoop's on Main. We appreciate you guys coming out and being such a tremendous part of the community. So, taking pictures, did you want to stand up and give any kind of speech or?
I can introduce the.
Go right ahead.
So we are very lucky tonight to have two of our wonderful residents here who work tirelessly on community events in different capacities. I was very lucky to be the town liaison for the downtown merchants group this year. And Lisa, with Scoop's on Main, Jewel Downtown, I like to call it, was, took the lead on the planning for Summerfest. And the way it turned out, because we didn't want, because there wasn't a downtown merchants group entity anymore, and no one wanted to hold the money, we figured that we would donate it to the cause. And it almost being 2025, the merchants agreed to give the trophies of Summerfest, so the vendors all gave these to the Sesquicentennial celebration in May. So that is my first announcement, and I would love it if we could take some photos with Lisa. We raised almost fifteen hundred dollars for Sesquicentennial. It's an idea.
Absolutely.
I think she said you needed to change before you went over there.
Jacket off or?
What's the shoes off?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking the shoes off. Man, I'm not gonna wear it. We can slide out of the window.
Yeah. You can make check.
I have to deal with you.
And then I will have Brian announce the amount that the barbecue cook-off has been bringing.
Oh, he brought some.
They brought in twenty-five hundred for Sesquicentennial. I can't take any credit for helping out the barbecue cook-off. That was all the genius of Brian. So we really appreciate what you put in. How much it's gonna turn out for an awesome celebration. And Alyssa, yes, my director also put in, love that.
Brian, you want to, you want to picture with me, bud?
Of course. To say, I gave a little, I gave a little bit of speech. I know Commissioner Johnson and Chief Whitley and I definitely had a great time. It was tremendous, tremendous barbecue. It's not for life.
It was, it was a tremendous time. We had a very difficult time picking out who the winners would be. And yeah, I just, again, it's something that I've said in the past, I'll say it again. I love having things to do in the community and bringing the community together. And we're very fortunate, we're very blessed to have tremendous folks here in the area and tremendous support from our small businesses, supporting what we're trying to do. So thank you guys a lot. Am I good to go?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. So next up, we're gonna be swearing in our newest police officer. Now, Chief does a very good job of confusing me with last names. Witt?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, okay, all right. Don't have to sound that one out too much, but yes. Chief, if you would?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to the members in board and in attendance tonight, all the department heads and our esteemed town attorney here tonight with us. Thank you to the members of the community. And most importantly, thank you to our new officer's family for all of your support. None of this would be possible without you. And to that point, thank you so much for driving all the way up from Cape Codarette. That's tremendous. I know with support like that, that he's gained a tremendous amount of success in this profession. And that's what it's all about. Thank you so much. So without further ado, it is my privilege to introduce to you the newest member of our team, Officer Mason Witt. So Officer Witt comes to us again from Cape Codarette, North Carolina. Comes to us. Mr. Mayor, how are you doing? So Mr. Mason Witt comes to us from Cape Codarette, North Carolina, a North Carolina native. He's currently working on his degree in criminal justice from Cape Codarette Community College as well. He comes to us from Raleigh Police Department. He decided in conversations that we've had that he thought that Youngsville community that we have here and the culture of our agency and the culture of our great town, which fit him much better than the big cities. So we welcome him into our family here in Youngsville. Mr. Witt is in the first phase of field training. Everything is going extraordinarily well. And we hope to have him out on the, on the street serving our citizens as a solo officer here pretty soon. So without further ado, Mr. Mayor, if you will, you have a sleuth. Who raised your right hand? Repeat after me. I, Mason Donald Witt.
I, Mason Donald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
I'll be alert.
To enforce the criminal laws.
To enforce.
Of the state. That I will not be influenced in any matter on account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The constitutional laws.
Constitutional laws.
Of the United States and the constitution and laws of North Carolina. Not inconsistent therewith. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer, according to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So help me God. Congratulations. And I understand we have a member of the family that would like to do this ceremony this afternoon tonight?
Yes.
You won't be the first one.
All right, let's get some pictures.
Yeah.
Did you go with them?
Yeah.
I'm here soon. Don't hold on much.
Hold on. Don't be shy, I got a wrong pin in here. Outstanding. Three thousand, yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, short and sweet. That's, that's how I like it. So we have no need to have any, so there's no public hearings for tonight. So we'll move into section five, which is citizens comments. And I believe Mr. Rizzo is here to, to have a quick presentation?
Maybe not a lot of cops are going.
Hi.
Another soul. Can I get back to the previous slide? Thank you. Friends and neighbors, it's a privilege to address you tonight. I'm here to make an appeal to your hard work and dedication to this community by offering my support to the town of Youngsville to be its community sponsor for pedestrian and bicycle safety. Before I go further, though, I have a few artifacts that I want to share with you guys. Thank you, Miss Heard. Let's briefly examine some of the slides that I've captured in the area known as the award-winning and recently adopted CLUTP plan as our downtown center. As you watch the videos, please know that I have no interest in becoming a NIMBY, a not-in-my-backyard resident who only lambasts what's right in front of them. What I am interested in is expanding pedestrian and bicycle safety measures through the entire downtown center. Local link street network and its neighborhood connector streets is defined in our plan. In this video, you can clearly see the children playing near meters away from a motorist who could care less about our safety. Next slide, please, Miss Heard. Again, all over this town, Youngsville citizens, Youngsville's children are in extreme danger. I think all of us in this town are in extreme danger. Next slide, please, Miss Heard. Make no mistake about it, friends and neighbors, this one is plenty chapter on pages forty-four and forty-five of the CLUTP. Isn't just something to be mauled about. This is a now problem that doesn't just plague cross street. This is on every street as defined, local link and neighborhood collector. Next slide, please, Miss Heard. This, this same document that won awards, thanks again, Ms. Garcia, for that. Itemizes on page forty-eight and forty-nine, robust opportunities to put forth safer intersection designs and traffic calming measures, that's me. And there is literally no time left to start implementing safer streets. Please, next slide. This is where Ashley crosses the street to visit our neighbors. Do you think she would survive a collision with this truck? I challenge you guys, would any of us survive a collision with this truck? I don't have any more videos, Miss Heard, thank you so much. I do want to point something out that may not have been evident to you all. These videos were taken less than a week ago on the same day. Let's not forget that in 2015, the town of Youngsville adopted a wonderful bicycle safety plan that distinctly noted expectations that a commissioner or planning board member be the de facto subject matter expert on safer streets, pedestrian and bicycle safety, and implementation of these best practices. There is a vacancy on the planning board, and I do believe that now is the time to backfill these needs. I'm not here to point fingers at the lack of inertia on this measure. I'm here to tell you that I want to challenge the entire community to let someone who has stayed Main Street with my blood leave the planning board's efforts on pedestrian safety. I consider you all friends and neighbors. And considering that we are about to adopt a suicide awareness week, I, I, I don't mind telling you guys that my father ended his life by suicide several years ago. Ashley, who I think all of you, Ashley, who I think all of you have met, is all I have left. I don't care about politics and an election year, and I certainly don't care about Sammy Blame. I care about her safety and I care about your safety and the safety of your children. Youngsville needs leadership keeping our streets safe. And I challenge you all to let me lead this cause. I have well-known questions and would love to chat with all of you about these measures and ideas that I have to make our streets safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. All right, I know we had the one that sounded, did we have any additional citizens comments?
Oh, I forgot, in the sign-in sheet?
That's okay.
Just ask if you.
That's why, that's why I was saying, is there anyone in attendance who would like to make a citizen's comment? Or yours?
Forgot that.
I should. Hey, everyone, name's Brian. Joe. Sorry, getting out there needs to be a long queue.
Really good.
Appreciate you coming out and supporting. I want to talk to you guys about something that I find to be very important here in Youngsville. I know it's so, you know, a couple of you, one-on-one, but when it comes to the parking of the town, we pulled backstory. I purchased the parking lot off of Railroad Street about three years ago. Couple of weeks ago, maybe three years. And at the time, we did so because the previous owner had plans to develop that lot into ironically a pizza joint. And it was gonna get rid of all the parking for that whole area. So we took it upon ourselves to purchase a lot and we tried to go and communicate with other businesses in hopes to split the expenses and the costs for it. And we were, that was an overwhelming response, no. So since then, we have shoulder the burden of the cost by month. But it's kind of getting to the point where, one, financially, we just don't want to do that anymore. We've done it for three years. It's benefited the town, all the businesses. Of course, I do get benefit from it as well with my businesses, but it's a, to the point where I'm hoping I could come to the town and see if there's something that we could do in the terms of maybe a lease to the town to continue offering this as public parking for the town and its patrons that come here. Because it's not just my customers or the yacht clubs or Sharon or Scoops or anyone that parks there, it's the whole town that parks there. And love to see if there's something that we could all work together to do, because I, I hate to go with option B, which would be to develop it and turn it into a revenue-driven source for ourselves or ultimately sell it to someone that would develop it. Because again, I know parking is a hot topic here in town and feel like we've done more than our part for the past thirty years to retain that for everyone. So I know I'll be probably reaching out to you guys individually, because if I understand this correctly, it goes before the Board of Commissioners to vote on whether or not that's something the town can allocate funds for. But I know this is more of me talking. If you guys had any idea whether or not that's something you would entertain if I was to put a proposal together, that'd be great. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Did we have any additional citizens comments? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll move along into the consent agenda. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I guess.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved and we'll move along. Old business, there is none. So we'll move into new business. And under new business, item A is the Youngsville Bypass Hotspot Analysis. And Ms. Garcia, I think this is your time to shout.
So the story of the hotspot analysis began a year ago during my second role on the job. Creating, in creating your relationships with Campo, which is the part, regional transportation organization that Youngsville is part of, we found out about the hotspot study, which only happened after Mayor Proton Brain did a lot of work to update the MTP alignment, which is, it's very high-level transportation binding stuff. But basically, he fixed a line on the map so that the bypass looks the way that the town wants it to look. And then I followed behind that and asked for us to get special study funding to look more deeply into the part of the bypass that we weren't quite sure where it was gonna go. The part from Tarboro down to ninety-six, the southern portion of the bypass. So I will read. Town staff has been working with Campo to prevent national, state, and local transportation plans. This hotspot analysis is the genesis of that great. A hotspot is just an area across the region that needs special study. Much, no one is surprised that the bypass is in those areas in our region. As the town accelerated work on the bypass, a need for a more specific alignment and design initiated a closer look at each segment from east to west, if you'll go back. The town has asked NCDOT to evaluate a realignment of US-1A to incorporate Wheaton Ave, which would remove the current skewed intersection at US-1A and Highway ninety-six. If you've ever driven that and had to break your neck looking back, it's a very, very unsafe intersection. This includes a local connection as searching neighborhood develops with the bypass connecting US-1 and Highway ninety-six. Just to mention, the segment crossing the railroad remains unfunded for the bypass, but design and environmental approvals are underway. The segment from Fleming to Cedar Creek, which you can see on this map, will be built by a developer as soon as water is allocated. The segment from Cedar Creek to Tarboro Road has had most of the right-of-way required and design of EVO approval are underway, are under review from NCDOT. This stuff has been funded and will be initiated upon congruence with the design outline. There's a lot of federal standards that we're having to meet as we attain right-of-way, get environmental approvals. Because we're asking for federal money, we're having to do this by the book. And so the main points of this, this study was that segment from Tarboro Road that reconnects Highway ninety-six south of town. And we chose, if you want to go to the next slide, purple alignment out of the green, purple, pink, and yellow because it has the least stream crossings. There's a whole entire report dedicated to why the purple is the best alignment. It's, well, a best alignment or a preferred alternative. But this was selected by the committee, by our consultants, by Campo, and it's placed before you now for adoption. So this, the purpose of me speaking to you now is for y'all to adopt this as a small area transportation plan, which just reinforces, yes, this is what we want our bypass to look like, yes, we're going after funding for this. And yeah, another note on the staff report is that the fiscal impact of this is significant. The cost estimate for that purple part is twenty-one point four million dollars. So it'll need to be funded through the spot process or by a similar step-by-step approach as the town's team on the north side. Left funding might also be used, which would require a local match in the vicinity of five million dollars. So I know that's a lot of information. All that to say, we have more information than we ever had about the bypass. And we have, it's hard to explain just how useful this study is because having updated numbers about what people are traveling on, or Main Street, it's critical to every thing that the town is trying to accomplish. So we're really happy that you all local match, gave the twenty percent local match to make the study happen and that Campo was able to hear us out. Because when I came here, for whatever reason, I was able to ask in a new way that although y'all have been asking for years, we're now getting funding in real sense. So I'm proud to present this to you. That's all I have.
All right, so I'm not exactly colorblind. I'm just, I'm wanting to make sure, so the green line and then the next one is purple. Okay, because both of them look purple, just different shades of purple. So that's pink beside the purple. Okay, all right. Don't ask Commissioner Johnson about my color choices in life because he already gives me enough grief as it is. So any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners?
Okay, okay. I think, I think, right on with the purple, it's also the only one that doesn't require us tearing down houses as well.
Correct.
With bisech farms. Yeah. Yellow with bisech. I think two farms. Well, it takes out the back edge of Mayfield, too. Yep. Like.
Turns about the string crossing, a couple of the least amount of string crossings without impacting the historic property that the creative one touches.
Okay. Good deal. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Okay, well, the action request that hears to adopt Youngsville Bypass Hotspot Analysis as a small area transportation plan.
Good motion.
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And that sounded unanimous. Any opposed that I did hear four of us? Okay. Next up is item B, proclamation, suicide awareness and prevention month. Whereas September tenth was established in two thousand and three as World Suicide Prevention Day by the International Association for Suicide Prevention, IASP. IASP has announced its twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six theme as changing the narrative on suicide to promote discourse and changing public perception of this complex issue from silence and stigma to openness, understanding, and support while promoting systemic responses based on the notion that suicides are preventable. And whereas, the nine hundred and eighty-eight suicide and crisis lifetime became nationally available on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, enabling callers to connect with local crisis counselors using the easy-to-remember three-digit number that people can access via phone, text, or chat. And since that time, usage of the Lifeline has dramatically increased through many people, though, sorry, though many people remain unaware of this resource. And whereas, suicide remains a major public health challenge with nearly nine thousand North Carolinians dying by suicide annually and approximately forty-nine thousand deaths by suicide in the United States. Suicide is the eleventh-leading cause of death in the United States, according to the CDC, and the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of ten and thirty-four. And according to the North Carolina Injury and Violence Prevention Branch, in two thousand and twenty-two, there were fifty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy ED visits related to suicide ideation and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-four ED visits related to self-conflicted injury in our state. And whereas, each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, coworkers, loved ones, and often the entire community. The vast majority of those who die by suicide have mental health issues, sometimes unrecognized and untreated. Volunteer-based organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, AFSP, are committed to save lives and bring hope to those whose lives are affected by suicide. And whereas, the town of Youngsville is committed to promoting protective factors against suicide. And suicide prevention requires a comprehensive, multi-level approach that encompasses strategies for prevention, early intervention, treatment, and postvention after a death has occurred. And by working collaboratively across sectors, we can create a more supportive and compassionate society where everyone feels valued and understood and suicidal behavior becomes less likely. And whereas, the town of Youngsville, along with, with organizations such as AFSP, encourages people to recognize that dead deaths by suicide are preventable, that there is no single cause for suicide and no single prevention program effective for all communities, that coping with stress and safety planning must be part of routine health and behavioral care for all, and that everyone has a role to play in suicide prevention. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners for Youngsville, North Carolina do hereby proclaim September eighth through fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, a suicide awareness awareness week and commend its observance to all citizens. And witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand and calls the seal of the town of Youngsville to be affixed this twelfth day of August, twenty, of September, two thousand and twenty-four. I just felt like the anchorman, just reading rightless on the, yeah. So we need to, we need to get that corrected. Yep. I will move along into number nine, reports and other businesses. As we have already discussed, the barbecue cook-off was amazing. It was a lot of pork consumed, and I felt it for the remainder of the afternoon, but it was too good to pass up. So appreciate everyone who had a hand in making that a success. I know Robbie was out there taking tons of pictures. Commissioner Johnson, he didn't get enough first time around, so he had to go back and get seconds. Just to, just to make sure that he was judging accurately. So I think it was a good time to have ball. I really do appreciate the small businesses in town and how they support the community and supports them back. So I think that is it for me. If I had notes, I left them at the house because I was running late. So I apologize for that. I'll turn things over to Commissioner R. I'll turn things over to Commissioner Redd.
I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
But thank you for asking.
Thank you. Commissioner Person.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson.
As the mayor said, it was a great day on Saturday. There were a lot of folks out there trying just the barbecue. And, uh, it was a great turnout. I, I, you know, it's, it was, um, the atmosphere was really, really cool, uh, for, not only for, you know, older men, but entire families, so that was awesome. So appreciate you, Brian, putting that stuff on and, and being a spearhead for that. That was, it was top-notch, so. Other than that, um, Mr. Rizzo's presentation is something I've talked about for ten years. When we've got a problem on those streets, um, uh, I have to hear it every time I go home, so. Um, you know, walking up and down the street, trying to walk a dog, trying to jog, trying to just, you know, be in your yard in that, in the inner part of our little town is, is difficult, because we don't have enough sidewalks. We don't have enough of that, and I know those things are expensive. Um, but, you know, we're getting to a point now where there's so many people coming through, through the, through the town, uh, and when they have work, what we've seen, he's a, he's, he's getting the brunt of it as well, as the folks on Winston Street, you know, they, they cut through and we're doing all this work right here. Um, I don't know if there's a, you know, when we talk to chief or, you know, talk to Nathan when he gets back, but if there's an option to be able to lower the speed limit a little, lower than what it is. I, I don't know what, what the answer is, and we can't have a police officer out there every day. But, you know, just in a one-day period, that's what he saw. That's what I see every day, you know, when, when I'm there. So, uh, he's, he hasn't resorted to throwing stuff at things yet, but, uh, as, as I have done in the past, I'm, I'm not.
Off the record.
Off the record. But I'm not afraid to say I didn't throw it. I, I don't, I don't really care at this point. I, it gets to be a problem. It's a problem. And, and I can always tell when there's a lot of traffic coming down the road, because there's more, more stuff I have to pick up in my front yard, trash. And it's, it's not just cups and stuff like that. It's, it's beer bottles, it's bootleg bottles, it's mini bottles. It's all kinds of stuff that lands in that yard. And I'm not the only one. I'm, I'm sure. It's all in the field. Uh, it's all in the, in the other neighbors' yards and it, you know, it, as the town, as the town grows, that problem's going to continue to be a problem, and it's going to get worse. And I would hate to think that our, our, you know, the little town that everybody moved to because it was, it was a nice little town, that they leave because of problems like that. That's, that's what I have an issue with. Um, so I don't know, it, you know, we've talked about it forever and we've got to do something about it.
If I can piggyback off of that, one hundred percent agree. It is definitely starting to affect the quality of life in Youngsville. Um, I can't walk my dog at night, and if I go running, it has to be before six AM or there are too many cars. And I don't like getting up that early. Um, so I would love, if you want to reach out to me, I'm in, like, whatever you need. That was disturbing, and that is where I almost got hit with my dog two days ago. Um, I'm in, like, whatever you need for me to do for you, I'm, I will do it.
Yeah, and there's, there's some other things that, that are happening behind the scenes that I, I'm not at liberty to discuss yet. Um, but it's some discussions that, that I've had with, with DOT about some additional options, and I've got some ideas, too, about helping curb some of that stuff, because Commissioner Johnson is a thousand percent correct, and he has been preaching about this for years and years and years. We, we initially thought the reconstruction of Main Street would help. Um, but Winston is kind of wide open and it's, it's easy to pass through and take a right. Um, that is disturbing. I've seen some of that behavior before. Uh, going to North Cross Street Station for brunch and, um, McAdams was out there giving them the Blue Life Special. But again, we can't, we can't staff it twenty-four hours a day, so, um, there's some things I think we can do short-term. Some things would have to be definitely more long-term. A win-win for everybody would be to get those vehicles off the downtown roads totally, because they're not stopping. It's a cut-through, so if we have the bypass, that's one thing. Um, if it were up to the state and Campbo, we're looking at twenty-fifty, that's not acceptable for us, and that's why we're pushing as hard as we are, so. Um, I just, I didn't want any of that stuff to, to be misconstrued, that we didn't or aren't taking it uh, very seriously, because we absolutely are, so.
Um, well, I will say, nine years ago, I, I got a, I got a, uh, I got a citation for running through that stop sign. I'm not afraid to say it. I, I did it, and it was a morning where a phone rang forty-nine times and I just went straight through it and an officer was sitting right there and he gladly pulled me over. And just the way it works, man. I, you know, and I, I think, I think that you're going to get more, more of that as, as, as we grow, so anything that we can do to curtail it, it'd be great, so.
Agreed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you for that. Thanks. All right, um, turning things over to our esteemed legal counsel, Ms. Katie Barbara Jones. Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I don't have any public business to report. On a more private note, uh, my family is expecting a very important arrival, uh, in mid-October. And so, um, uh, my plan is that I would be here for your October meeting.
Is it coming from UPS or like FedEx?
Same, yes.
The store, I got you.
See my, see my team.
Sorry, I did not mean to interrupt.
Uh, my law partner, Dan Hartson Jr., uh, will be your sort of interim town attorney for, uh, November, definitely. I plan to be here October, but even the best plans can sort of go differently, so I wanted to alert you guys this month. Um, and then my plan is to be back in December.
Wow.
Exactly.
All right, well, thank you for that. Um, and then I'll just turn it over to staff in general. Were there any updates, um, from over here?
For as long as it's been, we've already started our parade meetings. We're going to have a few changes at the staging area and at the uploading, but overall, the route and everything will still be the same. Um, I've already booked us three floats this year. Um, the mayor has a couple of pictures of them. They are beautiful, as always. He does a great job.
Roger and you.
Casino ride meeting is next week. We'll set the date for our twenty-twenty-five, um, casino night. And the Trick or Treat Betrayals, um, committee has already started meeting, um, as well. So all of our winter events are already underway. Yes, it's me.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Deputy Clerk, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm still.
Good to go. All right.
Uh, I'll just add that the Trick or Treat Betrayals is on October twenty-fifth, so the Brandon Four-Hell meeting. Um, and the downtown merchants are doing Trick or Treat Downtown from three to six. Uh, and then our event starts, our Parks and Rec event starts at five. So if you don't start downtown, see the businesses, see the costume, then head over to Lenny Park. Um, that would be great. The Holiday Market is the second downtown merchants event, and that's going to be on November twenty-third. We have a committee meeting about that tomorrow in the Community House. Um, and yeah, we're expecting it to be as popular as, or more popular as Summer Fest. We already have a hundred best memories at the Dumb and Shy House. So, we'll come tomorrow about where they're all going to go. Um, and it's fun, fun, uh, Lucy news, uh, I dropped promoted to planning director. Um, it's been such a joy to work with this town, and I really feel like I've been learning a new thing every day, and y'all are so awesome, and the town hall administration staff, we just, we're with my family. So I really feel like I found a home here, so thank you for having me. Um, and I got an intern, so this is, might be alarming to you. This may be alarming to you, but NC State has a GIS master's program, and every year they do, um, student projects. And I submitted for one, and we got a student to update our zoning map and to modernize it into a website. So that is going to be super cool, and I'm very excited to see it at the end of this. That's Lucy news.
That's pretty cool, Mike.
Wow, okay, so we're just dumping more NC State folks on it.
Okay. It's, it's fun. I'll get through. Say, I like that. She was like, I got the motion and a hint.
That's fantastic. I did want to, um, remind at least myself and Commissioner Redd, Seskow meeting is tomorrow at ten. Ten AM. Good deal. Okay, um, any additional questions, comments, concerns, any updates from any of the commissioners staff?
She, what time is the scoops? What's the scoop on scoops?
I believe it is three to five or six, but it's on our Facebook page, so.
Calling with a cop?
Comes with a cop. Yeah. I don't think they're going to let Kevin Lemon scoop ice cream this year. He got way too backed up. He loves to keep pace with my talking, so. They're going to stay.
We, we can all be a little guilty of that at times, so.
Uh, while I'm up here, I do want to say thank you very much for your understanding for the, uh, challenges we face in law enforcement and enforcing some of our local laws. While I would never direct one of my officers uh, to do anything as far as their officer discretion is concerned, that's not for me to dictate. That is their determination out there roadside, whatever they decide to do as far as citing someone or whatever the case may be. I can tell you that we have an unofficial policy, which is a hard line to significant and serious traffic offenses. And what that means is certainly with DWIs and careless and reckless driving as well, driving while licensed for a boat, folks who are driving around with no insurance. I can tell you, uh, the majority of those folks, I get to take a ride to Wusbury and get a bond in Youngsville, which is a little bit different than some of the strategies that our neighbors, uh, deploy. And I do think it takes, um, those significant and serious offenses off of the road, because we're beginning to garner somewhat of a reputation for ourselves about what will and will not be tolerated in the way lawlessness in Youngsville. Uh, I said all of that to say the stop sign violations are not an arrestable offense, and as Commissioner Johnson put it earlier, like, we have all, myself included, been guilty and had to hold, had to hold some paperwork for minor traffic offenses.
Good to hear that.
So that's just the way it is. That being said, uh, it is oftentimes very transactional. And we have had multiple offenders that have run through that stop sign before, um, as well as commit other infractions in town, and they realize it is a transactional offense. Uh, they're probably not going to get any points on your license and they pay a fine, and it's just a cost of doing business, because hey, I'm running late. So we run into a bunch of that. Uh, I don't want to make this about what aboutism, so I'm piggybacking on what you said. Uh, just wanted to provide clarity if everyone didn't know how the traffic offenses work and our ability to enforce it. So, thank you.
Thank you, too. So there is no need, uh, to go into closed sessions, so the next thing on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And any opposed? We are adjourned.